Hello, everyone. Welcome to the October meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits. For consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum tonight. I think we have five members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. First item on the agenda is roll call Mario De Fulvio. He is not here. Paul O'Brien. Joe D'Angelo. Chris Judge. Nice. Kelly Weiss. And Manny Priest is also not here yet. All right. And Manny is not coming, so we have a quorum and can proceed. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of the September meeting minutes. Everybody got that in on base camp? Anybody have any questions or comments or revisions? Needed? And if not, anybody want to make a motion to approve?
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Paul, second by Chris, all in favor. Now we can just raise our hands. Oh, Judge is Joe is abstaining. All right, so that's four in favor. One abstention, zero opposed. So that passes. All right. Next item on the agenda are secret determinations. All right, in this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. And after all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all our applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation. And we ask that any member of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our records. All right, tonight, our first. Secret determination is for the applicant United Group Pike Development Joint Venture. Project address is 183 Water Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a 10-story building. With a 549-vehicle public parking garage and 120 upper-story dwelling units in the C2 Downtown Business District.
My name is Claire Fisher. I am from Woodham Planning and Design and along with Tony Borges from CJS Architects, we're going to be presenting the Water Street Garage project. And you said that you need the address of the applicant. Is that correct? Sure, so my office address would be 142 East State Street. Suite B. On East Seneca, or I'm sorry, Ithaca, New York, 14850. As I previously previously mentioned, we are going to be presenting the Water Street Garage project. And Jacob, if you'd like to progress, just to give a brief overview of the project. In the fall of 2020, the City of Binghamton issued a request for proposal for the redevelopment of the municipal parking structure that was located at 183 Water Street. Which had reached the end of its useful life. And the United Group Pike Joint Venture submitted the winning proposal for that RFP. To date, they've partnered with the City of Binghamton representatives to help identify key planning and programming issues to ensure that the needs and expectations of this project are met. And the partnership will continue as we move forward to secure the project's ultimate success. Jacob, if you want to proceed, and just wanted to give a brief overview of the project schedule and next steps. Just for reference, wanted to mention that we are seeking two variances from the ZBA, one in regards to lot coverage and one in regards to a rear setback requirement. The proposed building footprint, as you'll see later in the slides, is nearly identical to the previous building footprint and will be proposing. The new use will also be a parking garage with some additional resident, new residential units on top of that. And to just touch on some existing conditions, as you can see in this aerial image, we've outlined the project site in red. The location, as we mentioned, is 183 Water Street, which is zoned for C2 Commercial and Downtown Business District. As I said, the old parking garage there has been demolished at this time. And one important neighbor to note is to the south, Boskov's is directly to the south of the site. And that's just an enlargement showing the site with the little red balloon and you can clearly see Boskov's to the south of that. This, yep. Sure.
Sorry, just to make sure we're all clear, the new construction is not going to connect structurally to the Boskov's building?
No.
Okay. Please.
No direct structural connection, but there will be a connection in terms of particular circulation. There's a. The previous parking structure, the parking deck that remained. So part of the design of the new parking structure, the new project, it would connect. That remaining parking deck with the new parking garage so that there is still.
Okay.
But structurally, there's something.
Thank you.
This shows the site plan of the previously existing site, and as you can see, the building was built virtually to the extent of the property line. And so moving into our proposed design. We are looking at this construction of a new building. The first five stories will be a parking garage with about 500 parking spaces. That are both, they're meant for a variety of uses. They're meant to serve Boskov's patrons. Any building residents and also visitors to downtown who might be parking there for other uses. And it's a pretty major downtown location, so we anticipate that you will get used from people looking to attend or be patrons of nearby businesses as well. As well as the top five stories being residential units, which would be about 120 new apartments at market rate. The site plan shows a brief overview of the general layout for parking. As you can see, there are a few entrances. The entrances along Henry Street and along Water Street. And then this diagram is just showing those former. Entry and exit points. So as you can see up along. Center Street, thank you. We are proposing that that not be a main or be used for entry and egress at this point, and we would be looking at using both Water Street. And Henry Street for. The the flow of traffic, excuse me. Thanks. And then, so at the time that our, after the RFP was proposed, the design team has been in conversations with city about looking at. The sidewalk and outside of the bounds of this project and seeing how that design works to enhance. The streetscape from mostly from a street tree planting and a lighting sense. So we've really just conceptually begun to look at that, and that's what this graphic is illustrating. And then I'm going to hand it over to Tony to talk a little more about the building specifically.
Thank you. In case you didn't catch it earlier, my name is Tony Borges and I'm with CJS Architects. I work, our office is at 755 Seneca Street, Buffalo, New York. So I'm just going to go generally over the general intent from the design standpoint. Again, a lot of this is in progress. A lot of this is actually locked in. But I think you can see from this particular site plan that, as Claire mentioned, the building itself is located on a fairly important. Location in this part of town, obviously adjacent seat to Shenango River and Water Street as well. Go to the next slide. This image that you're seeing here is actually an image that was submitted as part of the original RFP. So since this was submitted, we're again, we're working on design, developing the design. But ultimately, I think what we're trying to show here is the scale of the project. So again, if you can understand from looking at, looking at that massing, again, the five-story parking structure on top of which we have the five-story residential building. So it'll certainly have a very imposing presence, both in terms of people as they're moving down downtown along the street or from a distance as they're looking back towards the skyline. So again, these are some images of the project as it's progressed since the RFP. One of the main things that we're looking to do is to, one, we've been working with the city in terms of. How to program and plan the parking structure and also the intent of the parking structure itself. It'll be a precast concrete parking garage. The idea is to keep it a fairly simple. Parking structure. It'll act as a nice, simple base to the residential massing up above it. In terms of the residential massing itself, the intent is to introduce a lot of different or a number of different cladding systems. So whether it's through texture, color, module modular treatment or relief, we're trying to break up the length of the. Of the facade, particularly along Water Street, but again, to create some some variety and interest. I'm sorry, if you go back the one slide there, just the one point here, the other thing we're really looking at too, is to try to create some. To try to treat the the parking structure and the residential as one complete building. So again, trying to figure out ways to complement. Sort of the disparate programs, one to the other. One thing we're also trying to do is accentuate, for example, the corner of Water Street and North Henry. So you can see we've developed right now this idea of a sort of a glassy corner, which then really kind of marks marks the corner of Washington. And Water, I'm sorry, Water Street and North Henry Street. And again, this is just a view from the Northwest, again, just giving you a sense of, again, the treatment of of material and the massing as you move around. So again, trying to create some variety to the massing overall. I'm going to want run quickly through these, but this is essentially the first floor plan of the parking structure. As Claire mentioned, we have two different entry points, one off of Water Street, one off of North Henry Street. The parking area off of Water Street is intended to act as a short-term parking essentially. And the intent is that it'll be metered very similarly to how street parking is metered and managed. The entrance off of North Henry Street is essentially the main access point into the upper part of the parking structure up above. What you see in the plan here are a variety of different functions on the lower right-hand side of the plan. Which is the northeastern corner of the building at North Henry and Water Street is the is a main lobby for the residential. Program up above, along with some other support spaces such as fire command center, mailroom, trash holding, that sort of thing. At the upper left-hand corner, which is the southwestern corner of the plan, again, it'll be a lot more utilitarian type of functions such as fire pump rooms, electrical rooms, that sort of thing. If you go to the next slide, all we're really showing here is a typical layout. So again, very efficient parking structure from that standpoint. If you go up one more, this is sort of a typical upper, upper level plan, but it's very subtle here. But if you look at the left-hand side of the image, there's a couple of red. There you go. Right, that's sort of the act, that's the access, proposed access point to the top of Boskov's that we were talking about before to that remaining parking deck. But then as you move up, it's really the same parking layout. This is a typical residential floor plan. So again, this is a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units for a total of 120 units. And if you go to the next slide. This is the uppermost, the 10th floor level. Really the same layout as the floors below, but I think one thing just to point out is that there is the intent to have a. A common area space for the residence, fitness room, again, common space and maybe an outdoor terrace. And and this area will also be treated, I think, with some, you know, some transparency, some glass, so that again, as people are viewing. The building from a distance, you might have the sort of glowing transparent top to the building. And this is just a, just a simple route plan. Again, these are just the general elevations that I think we could probably move through quickly with these Jake, but again, the same ideas before, trying to create some variety, breaking down the scale of the building so that. The building has some some interest to it, both from a pedestrian level and from and when it's viewed from a distance. With that, I'll pass it back over to Claire.
So just as a summary. The design team is of the opinion that this new building. Will not have any significant environmental impacts due to the fact that it is virtually the same footprint as the previously existing building, which is also a parking structure. And we just wanted to emphasize that we see this project as providing needed housing and public parking spaces in a very impactful area of downtown Binghamton, not only for the patrons. Of Boskov's and surrounding businesses, but also helping to alleviate some of that. Street parking in downtown Binghamton and bringing people down to the core of the city as well. And with that, thank you for your time. If there are any questions or comments, we'd be happy to take those.
Hi, two questions. First one, maybe directed to both you folks as the applicant, but also to planning. In some of the the material, you said the. The new structure that's going to be built has a little over 500 parking spots. Do we know how many parking spots were in the previous building that's been demolished? Like, is this a net plus, a net minus? A net neutral?
I can get that answer for you. Okay, I do not know.
Okay. Second question. Who will be running and operating the parking? Is this going to be the Binghamton Parking Authority? Will be owned by the private landowner?
The the parking structure will actually be owned by the city and operated by the city. The United Group will be leasing the air rights to to the residential up above, for the residential up above. So the site still is with with the city. And this parking structure will be owned and managed by the city.
All right, Ken.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say it's.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Can you hear it? Okay. Yep. Sorry. First, I'd like to say is a very impressive plan. And my only question is, the. Original structure. Deteriorated from salt corrosion of the reinforcing steel. Do you have any, not to get into the design details, but like any high-level approach to. Make sure this structure lasts for a number of years?
I think what we're doing is we're basically using what are considered more up-to-date standards with regards to. Parking garage construction. So we're working closely with. A. Pre-stress concrete manufacturer that deals with all these structures all the time. So certainly, any, any building, any, especially when it comes to a parking structure is going to have. Wear and tear to it. So I think there'd be considerations in the design of the precast. Members to ensure that there's longer life to to the structure itself. I think one of the things to note is because of the fact that we're building a residential building over top of the parking structure that does provide some. Protection as well as opposed to sort of an open-air parking structure. So again, this is this is open air as well, but it will be covered by the parking, by the residential building above it.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's to piggyback on Chris's about parking. Would these lead structure, will you be? How many parking stations would be intended, they would go to the people living in the park?
So I think, and I'm hope I'm not saying this incorrectly, the the idea is that there's not necessarily anything that's going to be solely dedicated to. To the residents. I think it's open to the public, but I think the assumption is that residents will be. Some of the main users of the parking structure. I think that's the intent of I. I think I'm getting it now to say that I've got that correct. So yeah.
All right. All right, in terms of disturbance, are you over an acre? So you have to do a stormwater pollution.
No, so the site is 0.9 acres or under an acre.
Okay. Then includes the sidewalks that you're rebuilding.
So the sidewalks are, I think that's a future phase of work. Jacob, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that that was. A further, you know, in the future phase, not tied directly to this phase, but we wanted to start thinking about that conceptually so that there would be something to base it off of in the future.
Gotcha. All right, so the initial disturbance is less than.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions? How about garbage? I forgot to. Where's, where's garbage going?
So the, as as part of the, if you remember in the lower right-hand corner, we talked about a main lobby for the building, but there's also associated. Functions there. So in that gray area that you're seeing, there's a trash comp, Jake's pointing it out for us. Thank you, Jake. There's a whole trash holding area as well. So presumption is when trash will be removed, those those bins will be brought out. For trucks to take and then they'll be brought back in into the building.
All right. Any other questions, concerns, comments? All right. Excellent plan. There's no other questions or comments. I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the construction of parking for over 500 vehicles, which is a type one action under seeker. Coordinator review will be required, but the planning commission should act as lead agency.
A second now.
All right, so you're by Kelly, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project. In our November meeting at 5:25. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. All right, excellent. We'll see you back in November for a public hearing.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, our next secret determination is for the applicant Kearney Realty and Development Group. The project addresses are 162, 180. And 184 to 186 Henry Street. As well as 77 Pine Street and 229 Court Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the construction of a mixed-use building with 65 dwelling units and 4,300 square feet of commercial space. And two ancillary parking areas in the C4 Neighborhood Commercial District and R2, 1, and 2-unit Dwelling District. Welcome, Dominic.
Good evening. Dominic Emilio, I'm with CPL. We are the engineer representing the applicant. My address is 59 Court Street, Binghamton, 13901. The applicant is Carney Realty and Development Group. They are out of Summers, New York. We are representing them tonight. So. Just a quick summary of the project. We are talking about four lots, three on Henry, one on Pine. And Chat, Chapman Street or the stadium. That the the applicant is going to be purchasing from the City of Binghamton for for this development. So those lots will be combined. Into one prior to construction, once we have everything else in place. So. The, you may have seen it on the news, but the development calls for. Mixed use of middle-income slash artist housing. Total of 65 residential units. Am I coming through on the mic? Okay. Total of 65 units, 43 of which are one-bedroom, 22 two-bedrooms. And about 4,300 square feet of commercial space, which will all be on the first level fronting Henry Street. In addition to. Site plan review and special use permit by by this board, we are seeking a number of variances, which I can. Touch on very quickly here. The parcel, the one of the four parcels that's on Pine Street is currently zoned R2. And this falls under multifamily housing, so we need to use variance for the piece of the construction on that parcel that was actually granted last week by the zoning board. And we also are going for six area variances. Which the zoning board began their process last, last week, and will hopefully finish up in in November, once we address a few of their concerns. Those area variances are a rear setback. Between Henry and Pine Street parcels. Resting for 72.4% lot coverage, where 70% is the current maximum. We're asking for 55-foot building height. Or 45 foot is maximum. That building height, I should note, is only on Henry Street. We have four love, four stories on Henry Street. Pine Street is actually, believe it or not, 12 or 14 feet higher than Henry Street. So as we lose grade, we'll we'll lose a level on Pine Street. So at Pine Street, our our building is only 36 feet tall of the Pine Street elevation. Another variance is. 21, we're requesting 21 parking spaces, where 79 are required. And the two off-street lots, which are part of the same application. Are a little bit further than the 250-foot allowable. So the Henry Street lot is 276 feet away. So that's an area variance. And the Court Street lot is 275 feet. So. We're asking for 25 and 26 foot. Variances on on the two lots. Also going. It's gone to Groom County for 239 review. We've gotten some of their comments, but I believe it's gone back because of the additional information we sent. Few things to touch on that the zoning board has already brought up and we are working on, we haven't, they're not reflected in our materials yet, but certainly before next month, they will be. One of them is garbage. Right now, you'll see. Garbage enclosure on Pine Street. Down in the southeast corner there of the site. The neighbors and and the zoning board weren't. Pleased with that location. So we went back to the drawing board. And the architect is working on getting that space allocated inside the building. So I don't have anything again submitted yet. But I can tell you what it's looking like is. In the. What will be the first level on Henry Street, but effectively the the basement of Pine Street. Back in this area will be a garbage room. And we're going to add a retaining wall. And a path down the side of the building so that can be taken out to Henry instead of out to pine like we were showing, which which we understood to be a problem and and definitely heard that and we're doing what we can. So. That was one issue. Another one. I saw on the staff report with bike racks. There is, I believe, in the floor plan already submitted. And if not, certainly on the next one. On the first floor plan, you will see a bicycle room near the lobby. The lobby for the residential space is on Chapman Street. I should point that out. And right, right inside there near the lobby is a bicycle room. We, we do also want to provide bike racks on the sidewalk. You know, we, again, we we meet the requirement in the building, but we will provide them on the sidewalk. I did mention it to Economic Development Department at the city. Who's done some of the other theme bike racks throughout downtown. They couldn't commit to it at the time. They just don't have any. There, you know, at the moment, but they are committed to helping us with that. And if nothing else, the applicant will do something on on Henry Street for bike racks. That's not a problem. And then the last issue that was brought up, the zoning board and by a neighbor is. You can see on the plan here, two doors down to the east on Pine Street, there's a house with with solar panels on the west side of the roof. He, that property owner raised a concern that that this size of a building would have a detrimental effect on his solar panels. So we are taking a look at that and we'll provide something. I can say a few things. So we are taking a look at that and we'll provide something. I can say a few things. One, um, they just submitted, I, I just saw it this afternoon, maybe an hour ago, and I'm sure you'll be seeing it, but they did submit a little bit of a study of their own. Right off the bat, I've only seen it on the phone thus far.
They, they meaning the neighbors?
Yes, yes, the property owner. I, I saw a couple of things, a couple flaws in that right off the bat. One, they're showing the building at fifty-four feet tall, which is not the case on Pine Street. Only thirty-six feet tall. Um, and at, at first glance, it looked like the analysis was somewhat obviously two-dimensional. It wasn't taking into account the. Was taking into account the angle of the sun compared to the building, but not compared to the horizon necessarily and how that changes. Um, so again, we're, we're doing our own. Um, they threw out a number. I don't recall what kind of impact. They think it's having percentage-wise.
They said they would lose thirty percent of exposure.
So we don't, again, ju- just based on what I just said, I, I don't think that's necessarily the case. The other thing to point out is. Those are evening hours and, and every case that we do, pause them some shading. And when the sun's that low, you're not getting the same production. And I, and I'm not going to pretend to be a solar expert, but you're not getting the same production. When that sun's hitting the solar panel at such a low angle. Uh, the other couple of things I will point out that we, you know, already looked at to some extent is the next building. Immediately to our west is fairly tall. It's not as tall as our building, but it's probably thirty feet tall if I had to make a guess. And it's shown on our elevation sheet here. So there is a point in time where it looks like our building's having an effect where the building that's already there. Would a, a, already be having an effect. Probably greater than that is the tree cover. In this area. Those trees, you can look on Google Earth, they're, they're much, much taller than the building, in particular i- in the summer months when the sun starts to set. You know, further to the north. Just take, just some of the early looks taken at the, at the solar models. Those trees have a, have a very big impact in those summer months, um, more so than our building. So again, any impact our building has is. Is somewhat canceled out by existing impacts of the, 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 the existing building to the west and those large thick trees to the south and west.
My office is, I'm sorry to interrupt. My office's recommendation that the Office of Corporation Council would recommend that the applicant submit. To the commissions for the commissions review, a similar type of shade report. Um, so that I can give full consideration to some of the facts you're stating in light of the submission by, by the neighbor of their own.
Absolutely. And we're working on it. It ju- this just came up last week. Um, so we, we don't have anything to present just yet, but we'll, we'll be submitting something that you'll see before your, the next meeting in November. Um, and then lastly, the, the other thing I'd just like to point out about the, the effects on the solar panels is. A, a, a allowable development on that parcel today allows for thirty-five feet maximum building height. And setbacks less than what we're proposing. So a permissible use can go forward and build a two-family dwelling on that lot with a greater impact. Or e- equal to or greater impact than what we're proposing. So that's perhaps the most important thing to point out is that. We're not really impacting it anymore than an allowable develop, uh, an allowable use would have. So with that, I will take any questions or any discussion you want to have.
All right, Chris, you're up.
Hi, so to go over a couple of uh numbers that you threw out earlier in your presentation. The two ancillary parking lots will have how many spaces total?
Twenty-one, eleven on Port Street, ten on Henry Street.
And how many without the uh planning commission's waiver would your uh project require?
Seventy-nine with the, that's with the commercial space figured at a kind of an average use, not knowing what the use would be.
So. Why should we grant?
Well, I, I know we're outside of the fifty percent allowable by planning, by the planning commission, and that's why we're going to the area variance. Um, this question's been asked at every meeting so far. We've been to the zoning board twice and, and, and now here. Being that it, you know, well, the first part of the question, which you didn't directly ask is, is why don't we have any onsite parking room? And the answer to that is, this is what we have available, you know, what the, the city has available to purchase. And we gotta hit it, the developer has to hit a certain number of bedrooms to make this whole thing financially viable. Um, and some of that spelled out in the application material, then get into more detail if you want. Uh, being off-site, you know, they've seen in similar developments of theirs that this actually adds like a, a positive effect on the neighborhood, just creating that foot traffic. That right now you really don't see much of on Henry Street aside from game day. So there's that. And then on the. The, the direct point of your question is, is why should you grant it? I, I guess. I'm a- I'm asking the, we're asking the zoning board to, to grant the variance. And we're just asking to look at it as a, you know, development as a whole and the benefits it has on the neighborhood. This specific site was called out in the stadium district master plan for this specific type of development. So we're really trying to advance. You know, the, the goals of the city and, and studies that have already been done.
I, I don't, don't question that, but I guess my concern as a member of the planning commission is dumping fifty cars onto the streets. And making that neighborhood a challenge uh for on-street parking. I'm, I'm not even sure how many parking is, is bill lots with those side streets with. I don't know if there even, are there many parking slots on the, I, I don't. I, I, that makes me very nervous. I, I think I'll be very candid.
And the, it, it brings up an issue that, that I should probably get a little better handle on myself with the, with the applicant. I know when they did their press release. When this first came out, the rumble ponies hosted their press release. They're very much in favor of the project. You know, as a, as an organization, I don't know how that affects their parking or if any of those conversations have taken place. You know, aside from game night, you have several hundred parking spots across the street. Uh, that is something that we could probably, that's a, that's a major sticking point. I'm sure we can have that conversation with the rumble pony. And I'm not even sure if that's a rumble pony lot or if that's still a municipal lot either.
City property, but it's leased by the rumble ponies.
Okay.
Control it.
So.
It's. It, it is a concern. I, I, members of the, of the commission, but it's, it's a concern I am.
Under- understood.
Dominic, uh, maybe it would help, who's the intended renters?
So these are uh middle income. Um, it'll be a project, you know, partially funded and financed by um. New York State Homes Community Renewal. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna target fam- small families, probably young professionals. Uh, there's no, I don't know if there's a target other than it's, it's, there, that's maybe the middle income.
Middle income, okay. So certainly not a population that you would expect to not have a vehicle. You would expect they probably would have a, a vehicle.
Yeah, not, not necessarily. I, you know, I, are the numbers gonna play out for the, for the zoning code? That, that's anybody's guess. I mean, right now it's basically one parking space per unit. Whether it's a one or a two-bedroom, it breaks down to one per unit. Plus, I think we want with one for every three hundred square feet of um. Of commercial space.
Okay, so right now you're providing one parking space per unit roughly.
No, that's the required.
That's a required, right, right. You've got sixty-five units.
Correct.
Yeah.
And it, and it's, again, it's. It's not for lack of trying. Uh, the, the unit number is, is vitally important to the whole, to the development being successful in their applications to state.
Yeah.
And. You know, we're fortunate that the city did have the two other properties to, to throw in with that, so we could get some.
Yeah. Can you explain again, what's the relationship between the developer and the city? The, this is being.
City's the current landowner of all, of all six parcels.
Okay.
And upon, you know, successful application and that when they know they have a six, uh, successful project, they'll be purchasing them from the.
Gotcha.
So the city's current landowner and, and that's about it, other than they've.
And the city.
Showing support for the project.
The city would own this building when it's constructed or?
No, the city, on- once this, on- once we know we have an approved project between all these approvals and, and HCR. Um, this, the Carney Development will purchase all six from the city.
Great.
The four that the building will go on will become one. So we'll do it, you know, uh, lot line adjustments.
Gotcha.
Make that one parcel and everything's owned and operated by Carney.
All right, so the city's not making money after the sale or turnover of the properties. On this development. They're just in favor of the development.
It, it's not a. I, I don't. When you say they're not making money, I, I don't know the tax structure, so I can't speak to that.
Yeah.
But I, but I, there will presumably be some, some tax revenue, but no, the city is not collecting rents or.
Right.
Or chart, you know, they're not, it's not a revenue generator in that way.
Per, okay. I don't know how, but anybody else feels, but I kind of agree with Chris, just in that we've gone through a lot over the last two years to. Combat this whole thing where we have huge developed buildings that can't provide parking and then it turns into a big issue. So if there was any way to get.
Un- understand, understood.
Yeah. So, okay.
Uh, Jeff, two, two things, Dominic, this Joe D'Antolo. Um, there's a program out there you might look at called Solar Pathfinder. That will do all that. It would, we will do all that modeling for you on the solar side.
Yeah, that, that might be what they use, but again, I, I noticed a couple of the inputs were. Particularly the.
Might be worth, but just building on what Chris and um was just talking about parking. There is some time between now and the next meeting. We're in the first stage, the seeker stage. To ask, could we ask Dominic to come back and elaborate more on some contingency plans for parking?
For parking? Yeah, we, I, I will have those conversations and see if we can, we can come up with.
Time to look at.
Yeah, great.
And like, like I said, I, I can't speak for anybody, but there is a large. Parking lot across the street that's vacant ninety-nine percent of the time, so.
Okay.
And this is a good development for the rumble pony, so. I'm assuming that's a conversation that'll be had, that just isn't something that was formalized at this point.
All right.
If all could be made to work, it'd be a nice addition and fits in with the plan for the stadium.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
If all, if all would work out, it fits into the stadium plans that were presented.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, any other questions? Uh, Dominic, how, how many square feet are you disturbing on this?
All six parcels are. Under one acre. I don't remember the exact number, but I did look at that.
Okay.
You probably figured out, because they're all approximately. Fifty-five by. Yeah, even, even at that size, we're under forty thousand square feet.
Okay, so you don't have to do a sweep.
No, we are doing an earth, we, we will do an earth.
Okay.
Again, that'll, you can make your contingency on that like you probably usually do and. Uh, we're doing first pavement for the parking lots to address the city's requirement.
Okay.
And then at the building. I don't think the Europe actually applies to a residential though, so, but the parking lots we will address.
Okay.
With poor pavement. I'm saying we have good soil, so.
All right. And I guess the only other question, uh, so one of the driveways. To one of the parking lots was really close to the intersection of. Uh, the road that leads down to the.
Uh, Stanion Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's actually an existing curb cut there now.
Oh, there is.
We're just gonna clean it up.
Okay.
But that lot's being used. By the construction of the fire station across the street has been the last year.
Okay.
Again, they, they just put down gravel and, and started parking on it for a staging area, but there is a, there is a curb cut there.
Okay, so you're not gonna get into any issues with the DOT or anything or?
I don't believe so, because there's already one there. I don't believe so. We, we were, we wanted to initially put it on Chapman Street, but the DOT did make a comment. They don't want any, they won't allow any curb cuts on Chapman Street.
Gotcha.
So we left it where it was and.
Okay.
We will replace it because it's kind of shoddy the wa- the way it is, but. It is there right now.
Okay. And that's just, that's, people come in, they park for a long period of time and then they leave. It's not people coming and going all day.
Right.
So. The number of people exiting and entering isn't a factor in any of this.
No.
Okay.
No, there's only, at that lot, there's less than spaces.
All right. All right. Anything else? All right. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion that the applicant's proposal is an unlisted action under seeker. And that the planning commission should act as lead agency for review. All right, second by Chris, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at five-thirty at our November meeting. Second by Chris, all in favor? All right, five in favor, zero opposed. All right, we'll see you back in November. All right, thank you. All right, so that concludes seeker determinations. Onto our next portion of our meeting, which is public hearings and final deliberations. In this portion of our meeting, we'll be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we were reviewing your information, so it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of the project to remind us what you're planning. And then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we'll open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. Uh, to our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving a name and address of any member of the applicant's team that's planning to speak. And to anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, please also start off by stating your name and address for our records. Uh, just as a reminder, for anyone unfamiliar with the format of a public hearing, we'll be opening the microphone to solicit public comment about a specific project that's up for review tonight. Public comments should be directed to the members of the planning commission and staff and not directed towards the applicant. Uh, it is not acceptable for any member of the public to enter into any form of discussion with the applicant directly during the meeting. The commission members will take note of any specific questions or comments that come up during the public uh comment portion of the meeting. And when there are no additional community members wishing to speak about the project, the public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the applicant will be given a chance to respond. The commission members will ask the applicant to comment on any questions that were brought up by the community if they are relevant to our review. It will again not be acceptable for any members of the public to attempt to enter into a dialogue with the applicants while they respond to questions or comments. That arose during the public hearing. All right, so tonight, our first public hearing. Is for the applicant Stonebridge Campus Living. The project address is two twenty-one Washington Street. This is a site plan modification to add basement social slash assembly space. To multi-unit dwelling with twelve existing units and forty-five total bedrooms in the C two downtown business district.
Uh, so this applicant was unable to attend today uh for religious reasons and they're requesting that the case be tabled to the November meeting. Uh, that being said, we do have a public hearing and so anybody here that's looking to speak should be allowed to do so. Um, and then you can leave the public hearing open and, and table it if wish.
All right, that sounds good. All right, well, the applicant's not here, so he won't make a, or they won't make a presentation or remind us what's the, the project is. Um, but I think everybody's familiar with the requests for a basement development. Um, all right, well, the applicant's not here, but uh, we will open the public hearing since it was advertised. So if anybody would like to speak. Um, this will be the public hearing for the applicant Stonebridge Campus Living and the project address is two twenty-one Washington Street. Uh, this is a site plan modification to add basement social slash assembly space to a multi-unit dwelling with twelve existing units and forty-five total bedrooms in the C two downtown businesses. Business district. Uh, if there's anyone here who would like to speak about the project. Business district. Uh, if there's anyone here who would like to speak about the project, uh, please come up to the microphone and. State your name and address for our records. And we'll just go in order as, uh, people come down to the microphone.
Hello.
Perfect.
Uh, so I'm Yujanise and this is Zoran Nenadich. Um, we can give you our business address.
Yeah.
Two nineteen Washington Street, the building next door, um.
Yes, Zoran Nenadich, we, uh, own a business right next door to the proposed location.
So, um, we have, uh. We're hoping that it's denied, um, because of the frat house and that's the club and it affects our building, which is next door. Um, and our businesses that we also own and run next door. Um, we have three statements, one from a resident, one from our partners and the property own- ownership of the building. And, um, one from us as owner operators of the restaurant in the building, so shall we read them all? Or do you have them to read, or?
We did receive.
Summarize them?
We received all three statements, I don't think it'd be inappropriate for her to read them, because I would just be reading them the same way.
Yeah, do you mind reading them?
Okay.
That'd be great, thank you.
So I'll start with partners. Do you need their names and addresses?
Yes.
Okay, um, our. Okay, so they're, uh, DDBing Properties, the names are Daniela Chapo CFO. And Demir Chapo CFO, uh, their address would be fifteen twelve Carnegie Drive Vestal. Um, and this is the statement. Dear all, this is representative to propose, or I'm sorry, this is responsive, was. Site plan modification to add a social assembly space. To the basement of an existing multi-unit dwelling for use by residential tenants. The multi-unit dwelling at, uh, at issue is located at two twenty-one Washington Street, the fraternity house. Uh, as the owners of the adjoining property, we object and respectfully ask that the same be denied. As you may all know, on October fifteenth, two thousand and ten, we, DDBing Properties, DDBing. Purchased the renowned mixed-use building located at two seventeen to nineteen Washington Street in downtown Binghamton. The property was previously occupied by a fraternity and was in very bad shape from their misuse of the premises. Upon purchase. We remarked, uh, uh, we embarked on a journey to develop this property and. Committed ourselves to our financial resource and our financial resources. Uh, to that, so that the building would shine and again attract professional and small businesses. To the downtown area. We partially financed this development through the Binghamton Local Development Corporation's BLDC program. The BLDC wanted to attract to the downtown area professionals with increased spending power. The businesses who, uh, would, and businesses who would provide employment to the residences, to the residents. And further develop the city's offerings and infrastructure. By removing the fraternity from the street where the theater and court are located and by remodeling the building. To reflect our, our commitment to this city, we have achieved the goals we shared with the city of Binghamton. As a matter of fact, the BLDC recognized this on numerous occasions, uh, and named our pro- project. As one of the successful projects they helped finance. We are able to attract A, professionals as our residential tenants, B, businesses to our building. The renowned hair salon and, uh, popular and beloved restaurant, The Shop. And other businesses in the immediate vicinity, the Taco Garage, uh, Garage Taco Bar. Uh, these businesses in turn hired a number of employees, added a sense of sophistication and improved the image and quality of life of the downtown area. Several years ago, the adjoining property at two twenty-one Washington Street was turned into a fraternity house. This obviously was not the vision that the city of Binghamton shared with us when we purchased our property. The fraternity house has since been used, been using the basement space. The social assembly space in question as a club charging cover and serving alcohol to underage students. We have had to endure a number of issues. First, we had an increased vacancy rate. Because the residential tenants did not want to live next to a fraternity house. Second, our residential tenants had multiple complaints and police reports relating to noise disturbances, litter and unsafe conditions. Third, our business tenants have dealt with conflicts, destruction of property and economic consequences of closing operations at times. Due to daytime party events such as pub crawl and SantaCon. These, this, uh, past spring, the socialist, um, social assembly space was condemned by the city of Binghamton code enforcement. This has provided relief from the invasive activity of the fraternity. The fraternity house now seeks to up the ante, they ask. For a blessing to officially turn their basement into a social assembly space, a party basement club. Not only for the fraternity member tenants, but also for their friends or even anybody and any. Everybody else advertised to through social media. Turning a blind eye to the realities of this social assembly space in turn would irreparably harm our business, our residential tenants would move out as they would not. Uh, want to live next to a nightclub, uh, our business tenants would suffer financial hardship, endure, uh, continuous conflicts and. Property destruction. Our building would have an increased security risk as a fraternity. To house tenants frequently cross onto our building's roof, throw empty bottles into our gutters and create unsafe conditions for themselves and our tenants. Such risk increases as the social assembly space operates as a nightclub in the basement of the fraternity house. The increased health risk and fraternity house tenants frequently, as the fraternity house residents frequently. Leave litter and trash around our building, which in places where food safety is of paramount importance. May create unsanitary and unsafe conditions for tenants and businesses, business employees and customers, et cetera. For the above reasons, we respectfully ask that proposed site plan modification be denied. Best regards. Our partners of DDBing Property. So that is, uh, from our partners. Uh, we also have a statement, uh. From us. So we are, um. Uh. Managing members of DDBing Properties of two seventeen to nine Washington Street and owner operators of The Shop, a downtown restaurant. With this public comment, it is our intention to object to the proposal for a site plan modification to add social assembly space. To the currently condemned basement space of two twenty-one Washington Street, which adjoins our building. We would first like to clarify that prior to being declared condemned, this past spring, this space was not. Used simply as a social assembly space, it was in fact used as a fraternity nightclub and will continue to. Be used as such if this site plan modification is approved. Just over a decade ago, DDBing Properties partnered with the BLDC to rehab the vacant building. Uh, previously a fraternity and acquired in the state of a vertical slum located at two seventeen to nineteen Washington Street. We built fifteen market rate apartments as required by the BLDC as well as two commercial spaces, bringing the building back to life. The commercial space, spaces have been operating successfully as a hair salon. Entering its ninth year of business and as a restaurant, The Shop, in its eighth year of operation. After getting our building up and running to the, uh, two twenty-one Washington Street. Uh, the building adjoining ours was converted into a multi-bed student housing, uh, designed to accommodate large groups such as fraternities. The basement space was originally built as a gym and a party room, but has been used as a nightclub. With cover charges, all-night DJs and underage drinking. The club was in operation most weekends, starting from Thursday nights and going on into Sunday nights for several years. We are asking that the planning commission disallow the running of this fraternity nightclub by denying the state, the site change modification proposal. Please consider that as property owners, landlords and restaurant owners. We are in similar businesses to our neighbors, but hold all the necessary permits, licenses, insurances and certificates of occupancy. Unlike the menacing illegal nightclub next door. The running of this club is consequential, please consider the following. And now I'm just going to go over a few examples of all of the stakeholders that are affected by the running of this club. The landlords, uh, as landlords, we must proclaim the potential profession, I'm sorry, yep, to potential professional. Market rate tenants that the fraternity next door runs a nightclub on the weekends. This makes renting very difficult. We have lost many respectable tenants with broken leases due to noise and menace. And the menace of the club, including local attorney Garrett Lanes. We endure constant property damage from roof to facade, as well as litter, vomit and urination. The tenants experience com- our tenants experience conflict with, and, uh, much more with, when the club is in operation. An example being an underage female who broke into our building, this was literally just a couple of months ago. And into a tenant's apartment to then, uh, pass out, uh, on our tenant's bathroom, in our tenant's bathroom. Another example being inappropriate verbal exchanges. Uh, including profanities with a tenant who happens to be the chair of the Binghamton University English Department while bringing his four-year-old daughter home during the evening. As a restaurant, we have lost an estimated ten thousand, ten dollars in annual revenue, uh, due to the closing of operations during daytime party events. Such as BU Pub Crawl and SantaCon, uh, as our clientele is intolerant of the day-long clubbing. And drunken behavior in the street just outside our storefront. In addition, we have been forced to opt out of outdoor seating. Uh, leading to further loss in potential revenue and very disappointed customers as nightly destruction of the party, uh, property. Including plants, planters, streetscape, litter, vomit, storefront, urination and, as it was far too excessive. We can speak to the owners of the salon, Steel and Trust, our commercial tenants. Uh, to further exemplify the disruption of business experience during open, uh, evening hours and during daytime party events. When the fraternity operates as a club. Hmm, they have not only canceled client appointments on these days, but have also experienced conflict between staff, clients and fraternity club goers. An example being an incident during, uh, BU Pub Crawl when a young man exposed himself while urinating on their front door. Uh, while the mother, a mother and her young child were exiting after an appointment. Not only is the club, when in operation, burdensome to its neighbors, it's disruptive to the culture provided by the Forum Theater and to theater goers. We've witnessed many evenings in which guests of The Shop enjoyed a meal out dining before the show. Uh, and then were exposed to conflict and unruly behavior on the way over to the theater. The Forum has had to go as far as. To cancel entire shows, uh, due to club running all day on weekend and weekend of BU party events. Such as Pub Crawl. We would like to conclude that we, as property and business owners in Binghamton, New York. Are sincerely appreciative of the vibrance that the students bring to this town. We feed them, we host them. We host their celebrations, we host their families, they are vital to our local community. We simply plead that the proposal for a site plan modification to add a social assembly space. Which absolutely is a fraternity nightclub, be denied by your committee. On our block with the Forum Theater, the Federal Courthouse, the market rate apartments and the businesses, this is appropriate, not an appropriate fit for a club. We sincerely appreciate, uh, your help and support in this matter, um, so that our property and small business can continue to thrive in this community. That is our statement, um, and we have, uh, one statement from, uh, tenant, it's a lot shorter. Um, his name is Thomas Marchewski, um, dear planning commission, my name is Thomas Marchewski. And I am a former BU student and current resident of Binghamton. I've been ra- I've, having been raised in Staten Island, I attended the university from two thousand and two to two thousand and six. After which I moved back to New York City seeking better opportunities for myself, I returned to Binghamton in two thousand and fifteen. To pursue my passion in the food service industry. As a resident of two seventeen Washington Street, I strongly object to the addition of, uh. Social assembly space in the basement of two twenty-one Washington Street. To be very clear, the tenants of this location are not interested in a community service. What they want is to charge money to throw frat parties where underage drinking and drug use are encouraged. I have professionally, uh, personally witnessed, uh, and can testify to the consequences of these parties, multiple. Noise complaints filed with the Binghamton Police Department, often, uh, open container and underage drinking, public urination during. Including on the federal courthouse, uh, vomit and garbage on the sidewalk, hazardous drunken behavior in the middle of the street. The destruction of public and private property, including destruction of have handicapped parking posts, uh. Since the basement of two twenty-one was condemned by the city of Binghamton, I have been relieved. To find that the level of disturbance on Washington Street, my neighborhood is significantly reduced. I would kindly ask the members of the commission to imagine how they would feel having a social assembly space like this one next to their homes. For the good of this block, this downtown and this community, please deny the proposal addition. The proposed addition to two twenty-one Washington Street. Sincerely, Thomas Marchewski. That's everything we have, so this is next time, next month now. So, um, we're just asking that you deny this proposal.
Perfect, thank you for your comments. Okay, um, so at, at the next meeting, excuse me, the, uh, public hearing will stay open.
Oh.
And we, we won't need you to read them again, but they're entered into the record now.
Okay.
And hopefully we all took notes and. I took notes and we'll make sure we ask a lot of questions when they come to present in the next meeting.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Nick, I added the, the letters to base camp under today's meeting.
Alright, and now we have all those letters, so we'll be able to see, so thank you. Alright, anybody else want to speak about the project at two twenty-one Washington Street? Alright, seeing nobody else coming down to the microphone, um, we're gonna leave the public hearing open, so we won't close that, but. The applicant's not here to respond, so I'll make a motion to table the project until the next meeting. Alright, seconded by Chris, all in favor? Alright, five in favor, zero opposed. Alright, so onto our next public hearing, so this is public hearing for the applicant family enrichment network. The project address is twenty-five Double Day Street. Uh, this is a site plan review and special use permit to convert an existing building into ten one-bedroom apartments in the R three multi-unit dwelling district. Welcome back.
My name is Pearl Ramsey, I'm Director of Program Development at Family Enrichment Network, and my office is located at twenty-four Cherry Street in Johnson City.
Nick, I have to give disclosure, I'm confident I can, you know, objectively, um, report, but I've worked for Family Enrichment Network in. April before, so just so everybody on the panel knows.
Okay.
I've worked for Family Enrichment Network before in the past, so I just had to disclose that that's, you know, I have a relationship with them, so if anything. Uh, just. I worked as a, um, fund event, fund, fund development and, uh, events planner. I worked closely with, with, um, April.
Uh, while you might not have an actual pecuniary gain or conflict due to the appearance of propriety, we would recommend, uh, motion to recuse.
Recuse, okay.
At this point.
Sorry, does that mean, will we not have quorum?
No, no, we still will have quorum, that's, that's why it'll be okay.
Yeah, otherwise I would have been much more invasive.
Alright.
But they're a great organization.
Alright, so Kelly's gonna recuse, uh, Kelly, we just asked whenever you recuse, if you don't mind just sitting in the audience for this one. Alright, welcome back.
Thank you, I'm, uh, Kenneth Gay from Keystone Associates with the Architects for, uh, Family Enrichment Network. Uh, my address is fifty-eight Exchange Street in Binghamton. I'll give you a brief overview of, of the plans that are for you, um, there's been, um. There has not been any changes to the plan since our last time, however, we did, uh, discuss some things during the seeker presentation. Uh, that, uh, we'll address. Uh, the project consists of, uh, the renovation of, uh, building located. Uh, at the end of, at the rear of Saint. The project consists of the renovation of a building located at the end of, at the rear of St. Paul's Church. The Family Enrichment Network intends to purchase this property and a portion of the parking lot, which is defined by the red on the site, and renovate the facility for 10 one-bedroom housing unit. There is some office space and community room on the first floor as we're trying to salvage the pretty ornate community room on that first floor, it was a chapel at one time. We propose eight parking spaces for the property adjacent to the proposed renovation. We are not planning any additions to this building except for a handicap ramp, accessible ramp off the parking lot in that area right there, and we will be removing the red fire escape that's on the building as well that exists right now because we're reconfiguring the exiting stair inside the facility from where they exist now. As I said, we're providing eight parking spaces. The requirement is for 10, but the, this board has the ability to waive the requirement by 50%. The items that we discussed last time in regards to the property were an e- a permanent easement that would be established between the Family Enrichment Network and St. Paul's Church to allow car traffic from the parking spaces through there. There'll be entrance right here, and it's one-way traffic as, as the, with the existing, and those are existing spaces right there. There are additional ones here, however, the church would like to maintain that portion of the garage building as part of their ownership, and we didn't want to block that. We have worked with, or I should say, April and her group at Family Enrichment have worked with the owner to include that in part of the purchase price, and it's just the, the permanent easement for that traffic flow. It's right now being reviewed by the Archdiocese and Circus. There was a question regarding the, a buffer between the, or a barrier between the parking spaces for our residents and the churchgoers, and as we discussed last time, that was in the staff findings, we didn't feel that that was something we'd like to do only because to ease for snow removal and not have a pileup and really be a hindrance to both, both properties at that point. And I think the other question was regarding the red fire escape, and I've addressed that. Currently, this, this project is, well, this project will, and April's group is seeking funding through the, through the New York State, and we're trying to get approval of this project before we seek the funding as opposed to getting funding and not have it be approved.
All right.
I can speak to that a little bit. So we, in 2021, received state funding through the Empire State Supportive Housing Initiative to offer supportive, permanent supportive housing to 10 individuals experiencing homelessness. And through that grant, it will fund all of your support services, so your case management, your life skills, your security officer and maintenance, as well as a portion of the housing director's salary. The next component of this funding is through the HHAP, and that's a homeless housing assistance program. So with that, we're seeking capital funding, and the sale of the church is just, as we said, it's pending approval through the Archdiocese, and that's for $95,000.
All right, sounds great. Any questions before we open the public hearing? Oh, Chris?
This, I know we talked a little bit about this last month, but just to make sure it's on the record. With the asking for the reduction in the parking spaces, the residents, given the nature of the residents, maybe they're probably going to be without cars. So just want to make sure, we're not dumping 75 cars on the street. Thank you.
All right.
I had one from our office, were you able to get to the easement? What's the timeline on that with St. Paul's?
Yep, so that's part of the deal, we addressed that with St. Paul's. They presented that information to the Archdiocese, and frankly, they're willing to negotiate that with us. It's not going to increase the price at all, and they're looking to get rid of that property because maintaining that is just too expensive and costly, you know, for them right now. So it's, I don't see it being an issue.
And you understand that any potential building permits that you might need would be subject to obtaining the easement and provided that the commission grants it, and that any certificate of occupancy would likewise be withheld pending approval that he's not.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll add one thing that was discussed during last month's meeting, I think it was by council, was right now it's two separate parcels, and we were not opposed to combining that into one. I believe council felt that that was going to provide that a easier process with the Supreme Court. I believe that's what the discussion was last, last time.
All right. All right, well, let's open the public hearing and just see if there's anybody here to speak about the project. All right, so this is the public hearing for the applicant family enrichment network. The project address is 25 Double Day Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit to convert an existing building into 10 one-bedroom apartments in the R3 multi-unit dwelling district. If there's anybody who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone.
We did receive an email six minutes ago that I can read into the record whenever you're ready.
All right, let's hear it.
This is from Lisa M. Young at 26 Double Day Street. I request that the matter be tabled for another meeting to allow me to attend personally due to the reasons I've outlined in telephone calls. I'm a handicapped senior who's having surgery tomorrow. Only received notice of this mid to late last week and have yet to see any of the materials. Again, I'm property owner of 26 Double Day Street. The application should be denied because there's no reason to put a homeless shelter in this neighborhood. It seems the only reason for it is that the church got a grant, had a building available, and chose to use it. There are no resources for the homeless in this neighborhood. I personally tried to extend my apartments to formerly homeless. I can't tell you how many times they lose their housing allowance because of missing DSS appointments, et cetera, because it's too difficult to get downtown to DSS. They miss the bus, the bus doesn't come, et cetera. There's no nearby other resources like MHAS, the VA, et cetera, that would help the homeless. This is a bedroom community. There is a church there, but it's locked almost all the time, runs no programs to the public that I've ever seen. There's already some sort of housing a few blocks closer to downtown for the homeless, which I am aware of because of involvement with. So I know firsthand what goes on at such places. The people hang outside the building, litter, and create noise. Planting a homeless shelter across the street from my little two-family house will effectively ruin the value of my property. Who would want to rent there after that? Never mind buy my building. The plans apparently call for some sort of supervisor to be present. How many hours? 24. If the church itself acknowledges that supervision of these tenants were not used to living and taking care of their own apartments and surrounding areas is necessary, why would it be appropriate for such a facility to be located in this quiet end of double day, which is simply a bedroom community? My property is removed from the gas station in Quick Mart and the noise of Shenango Street, but a project like this will make it seem like more of a commercial area. Certainly needing a manager there makes it a business facility more like a hotel or Salvation Army type establishment than a residence. 10 one-bedroom units is an idealized dream for that project. Each one-bedroom tenant is allowed under law to bring all his or her children to live with them, which could mean four, five, or more people to each apartment regardless of anticipated occupancy. Further, each tenant is permitted by law to bring a significant other to live there along with the significant other's children, adding up to an additional four, five, six more people living in each unit. This means that 50 or more people being crammed into a house the size of my two-family across the street from my two-family. That's the end.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else here to speak about the project? All right, seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing. If you come back up. All right, some slightly offensive things in that email, but I guess we'll give you an opportunity to comment if you'd like to.
Um, okay. So with this 10 one-bedroom units, we would be certified to provide two beds per unit, so a maximum of 20 people in this facility. So I think that addresses the question of how many people would be there. This is supervised or overseen by OTDA, which is the Office of Temporary Disability Assistance, who comes and provides monitoring to ensure that we're complying with all the policies and procedures set forth in our grant contract. We would have a case manager on site to assist individuals as we know that these individuals are persons who have experienced homelessness or are experiencing homelessness. They could be coming out of a shelter, they could be unsheltered, and so of course, they're going to need some assistance with becoming successful with daily living skills and just self-sufficiency in general. Living skills training will be offered, we offer various classes and workshops. They're not required, but they're offered. A security guard would be on site 24/7, no. These are independent apartments for individuals to live independently. We just offer skills to help support individuals. Did I hit all of them?
I mean, I guess the other comment was about people hanging out outside, noise, litter.
Yeah, those are things that I don't, they're opinions.
Okay, perfect. All right. Yeah, I think you covered everything. Anybody have any last questions, comments, concerns? All right.
I just want to, I want to make this point that this is not part of the church's project. This is not grant funding that the church is receiving, that it's grant funding that our agency and nonprofit would be receiving, and we're purchasing the property from the church, so there's no affiliation there.
All right. All right, I'll make a motion, so this was a type-two action, so no other action under seeker was required. So I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met contingent on the easement for vehicle circulation through the church parking lot be obtained and that the planning commission is approving the waiver of 20% of the parking requirement. All right, so good by Chris, all in favor? All right, four in favor, zero opposed. All right, good luck. Yep. All right, that concludes public hearings and deliberations. So the next item on the agenda is other business. I think I'd like to start by asking, what's going on with this fraternity house that is not a fraternity house at 221 Washington Street? Everybody that talks about it says it's a fraternity house, but they've confirmed that they've not, it's not registered as a fraternity house, I believe. So I don't mean to look at you, Greg, I just, I know this will fall to you eventually.
It's fairly clear that the residents are a fraternity. What the applicant said last time was that they're not a recognized fraternity, which means they've, they've lost official recognition from the university, but that doesn't mean that they're not a, a social fraternity.
Is there anything the city can do to combat this?
We do have, we were provided. So fraternities are no longer using our zoning code, they're sort of lumped under congregate living now. If the applicant, unless the applicant is officially declaring that this is a fraternity house and not just a multi-unit dwelling and, and asking for that congregate living approval, I don't know, we, I guess we would have to investigate and try to confirm. We do have some police reports that were provided that I didn't upload because I knew we would be tabling this today. But in, in one of those reports, it states that there was, that that officer did not see evidence of Greek lettering when he went there.
Okay.
What others have, so. I guess we could look into it further to confirm whether or not it's a, it's a frat house.
Are there still rules about fraternity houses, though? If you're declaring yourself a fraternity, there are specific rules.
A fraternity would now be congre- so you would have to seek congregate living approval.
Okay.
You cannot put a fraternity in a dwelling unit, you would have to get congregate living approval.
Okay.
And that's only allowed in certain districts, it does happen to be allowed in this district, but that's a special use permit that they would have to ask for.
Okay. And that building right now is, is congregate living approved?
They got approval for a multi-unit dwelling.
Yeah.
Whatever the breakdown was on the agenda, I think, is it 12 units?
Or four units? 12 existing units, 45 total bedrooms?
Tito, I do want to raise this point. Last month during the Zoom meeting, which is recorded, correct? So we
Yes.
Review those, review the tapes. The applicant, because I think there were three people speaking on behalf of the applicant landowner, the building owner, and there seemed to be some sort of confusion amongst them about whether or not they are renting all 50-something units to one, one big lease? Or we just happen to be 50 individual leases that just all happen to work out that they're all buddies? I'm not sure if that has legal implications for, for all this, but if someone needs to investigate that, that makes me curious, makes me curious.
Yes, if they had concrete living approval, that wouldn't be an issue.
But they don't.
They do not. Physically, it's broken up into apartments. The fact that it's leased to one group, that's sort of a gray area, there's nothing really preventing that. But you can make the case that that doesn't sort of meet the intent of that land use and that it should be called congregate living.
So may I ask a question? So say we deny that's, this is what they want to do, they're already doing. So what's the, what's the recourse?
Well, as of right now, it's condemned, so they've stopped using it. If you deny it, they would have to continue to not use it.
I suppose, I didn't phrase it as much, is there anything that, that reflects upon the congregate use of the, of the building that they, they haven't behaved in a way that's, that's appropriate for, for this? Besides just fines, is that?
If they're using it as an elite, like they don't have approval for the land use.
Yeah.
They could be cited and prosecuted, and I think fines would be, they were, fines would be the punishment if they.
I believe the organization is an LLC, in which case they could only be subject to fines, and the maximum fine under the section is $500. Granted, you could bring multiple prosecutions over the course of time, but the fine is fairly minimal as compared with the community impact.
All right, anybody have any other business?
One more. One more.
As much fun as this has been for the last six or seven years, I handed Nick my resignation. My term expires at the end of the year. I will not be coming back.
So we have you for November and December still. All right, we won't say goodbye yet, then. Maybe something will change. All right, well. Yeah, that's a bummer. But we understand. All right. Any other? All right, any motions to adjourn them? Motion by Chris, seconded by Joe. I saw his hand. All in favor? Five in favor, zero opposed. All right, thank you.